Good evening, everyone, and I thank you for being here all that can make it here tonight. Under the present conditions of the weather, we don't have any guests, I guess. So we're gonna go ahead and get started. Mr. Jerry Walker going to lead us in prayer, and then I ask that you all please stand for the pledge. Okay, we're gonna dive right into this agenda. First item tonight will be to consider approval of minutes for February 2nd, 2021 meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the February 2nd meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Tim Dale, seconded by Mr. Henry Chappell. All in favor, say aye. Okay, well, move on now to item two, which is our finance report, January 20, 21. Ms. Reeves?
Thank you, council. Attached to your financial report for the month of January. We're doing really well on revenues. We're about approximately thirty-three percent through our fiscal year, and we've collected approximately forty-one percent of revenue. Our sales tax was doing really well. We're about fourteen point four-six percent above prior year at this same time. As you know, we were not in COVID last year at this time, and so having fourteen point four percent above last year, and we are in COVID this time, is really good revenues. This is pretty much reflective of what our Christmas numbers were, having all our Christmas numbers in. So revenue was really, really good for us. We are about seventy-two percent collected in our property tax. This is really good for this time. Usually, by the end of February, we'll have around ninety percent of our property tax paid up, because in February is when the property tax deadline is. So having seventy-two percent of it collected already is really a good sign. Utility fund revenue, we're about right on target with where we want to be with where our budget is. We're about three point oh-seven percent above prior year, again, compared to non-COVID numbers last year. Sewer sales is about six percent above budget, but again, y'all know we had a small rate increase in above last year's numbers, so that's again right where we expect to be with that. And sanitation's about one and a half percent above last year. Aviation fuel is down a little bit, but again, with the weather being the way it is, we kind of expect that with the airports flying in and out. And franchise fees is up about eleven percent. Expenses are right where we expect those to be, on target. Again, we're about thirty-three percent through the year, and we're right around thirty-three percent of expenses expended. So we're pretty close to on target with where we want to be with expenses. Right now, we have quite a few projects in progress. The financial audit's completed. We're working on getting ready to meet with the audit committee on that, and we should have that audit presented to y'all at the first meeting in March.
The audit committee, we're looking around the week of the 2025, is that right? We will holler at y'all at Councilman Dale and Councilman Walker.
And we, I have the hotel motel audit and the Gatsby seventy-five audit that y'all approved to present to y'all tonight as well. And we got those finished up. We got all our year-end reports done and completed. And we did get quite a few of our fleet vehicles for our fleet program in. We've gotten twelve of those in so far, and we are utilizing those. And then we, most of the copiers and printers have been put around. I haven't heard anything bad about them so far. They're working really well. And I did include your capital projects in your packet with you today, where we are on the parks projects and where we are in the other project. So I'll take any comments, if you have any, on those capital projects or any of the financials.
You have the hotel motel audit coming here a little bit, correct?
Yes, sir.
On this copper printer program, what was the terms on that, on the lease, or how was that?
So we signed initially a three-year lease on that, but we can terminate it at any time if we want to. Basically, they'll just come in and pick up, you know, we can either buy out the copiers, I mean printers, whatever's left on them, or they can pick them up and we can replace them with whatever we want to on those.
Hey, Tim, I think you'll notice over time, I think Mikel will be able to confirm this for us down the road, but we'll see from a dollar standpoint where we're gonna end up saving money, because before we had so many different variations and models of printers needed this type of ink cartridge or this type of, you know, refill, et cetera. And so it was costing more money to manage all those different ones, and now it's gonna be easier to streamline it, and the prices are gonna come down.
Absolutely, yeah. There'll be more uniform for copy cartridges for everything on them, absolutely. The other ones were kind of getting outdated anyway.
Yes, sir, they were.
Counsel, we have any further questions? Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Reeves. We certainly appreciate you. And we'll go ahead and close item two, move on now to item three on the agenda. Item three is to consider award a bid two dash two-one-two-two for utility four-by-four backhoe.
Thank you, mayor and council. As you know, we went out, we were about to buy a backhoe that was on the buy board back in the fall. We decided to not do that and to go out for bid. We got the same one that we were gonna buy from Caterpillar bid at one-fourteen, and we got a local bid from Conroy for ninety-four thousand. But anyway, that's what we brought forward for you to approve tonight was the Conroy tractor.
So is it apples-to-apples comparison between the Hope, Cat Hope versus the New Holland?
I am. It's, the difference is ninety-four thousand to a hundred and fourteen thousand difference, but they're not, they're not.
I realize that, but I'm asking, as far as what Anthony's crew needs, is it missing any type of required apparatus or anything that we need, you know, that we're, are we sacrificing anything minus, you know, that?
Yeah, yeah, it's, one's a commercial grade or a contractor net, so we are sacrificing a little bit, but there's the difference, we're sacrificing some power and, because every day of the year, it's like a commercial construction kind of a vehicle. But, but we still have the twenty thousand dollar difference, and we've got a local bidder.
So it's your opinion that with the Conroy tractor bid, if we were to go with that backhoe, that we can still perform the duties that we need to perform even though it's twenty thousand dollars less? I mean, I'm all for the lower spending. I just don't want to shortcut our crews from being able to have a piece of equipment that they need to do the job right. So that's why I'm asking.
It would, a comparison would be like a half-ton truck or a three-quarter ton truck. And the half-ton truck can pull everything, a three-quarter ton truck can, but with maybe just a little less efficiency and power. It, for example, it doesn't have, it doesn't have the same reach on the bucket. The bucket, it's about, it can get out there, but it doesn't have the power to dig way out there. You have to take shorter things. So we can get it, we can get the job done. It's just, and we can get the job done, but we don't want you to think that it's apple and apple, you know?
But as far as day-to-day operations, it does the same thing?
Yes, it'd be, again, it's like the half-ton truck will do the same thing a three-quarter ton truck will do. If you can get your arms around that, you know, pulling heavy stuff and whatever, it will. I pulled my horse trailer with the, all the horses in it with a half-ton truck, and I've done it with a three-quarter ton truck, so it will do it.
Right, I understand what that said, but sometimes the three-quarter ton truck can struggle to do a job. So that's why I'm just making sure that we don't shortcut ourselves just to save twenty thousand dollars. I don't want to hold up them trying to do a job, and they come back to you and say, "Well, Ed, we can't do this because the backhoe does not have the reach or the horsepower it needs to, you know, hypothetically pull that stump out of the ground," or whatever it is. I'm just saying that.
Well, my staff has told me that over the past years, that they bought that same tractor, and it doesn't do what the Caterpillar will do, so they're telling me that. I just know that we, when we went out to bid, the buy board, the only one on the buy board was the Caterpillar, and they had a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar price on it. When we bid it, they dropped their price to a hundred and fourteen. The Conroy was again ninety-four, so my staff says...
Nothing changed. The tractor bid dropped ten thousand dollars from Hope when they heard, the Hope product dropped, Caterpillar when it dropped, when they heard that someone else might be bidding?
Yeah, that goes to, that goes to what I've always said. If you bid them out in this competition, you're always gonna get the better price. Now, there may be, there may be times when we need something right away. We go to the buy board, it's a bid, bid it every year, it's bid for every year, and we get this price, and you can go get it faster. Sometimes we, the city may need to do that, but if you've got the time to bid it, it will always, it will always be cheaper.
My husband's business sells products through buy board and tips, and when you submit your guaranteed price, what that is, is you're saying we will guarantee you this price, and the buyer, in this case, the city, is not required to get bid. But almost every time they get a call to bid a mule or a golf cart, he usually sells it cheaper than what the price he agreed to was a guaranteed. We will at least always honor this price. So it is good, guys, to go out for bids. Yes.
Like you say, you even compare your bids with the buy board bid all the time to see which one's the cheapest. That's what we want to do to get on apples.
I'm gonna make a motion that we award this bid two-dash twenty-one-twenty-two for the utility four-by-four backhoe to Conroy Ford Tractor for the ninety-four thousand dollar price as presented tonight.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Tim Dale, seconded by Mr. Galen Adams. There's no further questions, Madam Secretary, report your vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carried unanimously. We'll now close that item and move on now to item four on the agenda, and that's to consider approval of pay request from MHS Planning for work on the new sports complex.
But he's also on the other, the next two as well, so.
Good evening, council. This is a, today, this item is to consider the approval of the pay request for MHS Planning. This is for the park, or the, excuse me, the Commons up in North for the sign and the archway, I believe, that they're working on. This is the last payment for the work, for the design, which will be going out for bid by the end of the month.
So this three thousand seven hundred seven dollars and fifty cents fee adjustment to, that is concerning, that is concerning the arch?
Two arches and I think the sign, the entry sign, what that was spelled wrong.
No, there's just one.
One, okay.
This may not be the time to ask the question, but we're talking about the signs. There's no fee adjustment for changing the sports off of the sign to the complex? Thank you. But you've looked this over, and you feel comfortable with this, thirty-seven oh-seven fifty?
I spoke with the consultant who's been supervising it earlier, and I do feel comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Okay, council floor is open for questions.
I'll make a motion that we approve the pay request for MHS Planning for the work on the new sports complex.
Got a motion by Mr. Galen Adams, seconded by Mr. Jerry Walker. Madam Secretary, please record the vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item six, consider approval of West Loop wastewater collection improvements agreement with KSA. Okay, I'm sorry, I skipped one here. All right, who is item five? Is consider approval of wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation agreement with KSA. Well, still a same person, you still here, huh?
I'm still here. I'll be here for the next one as well. Mayor, council members, this is for a design contract with KSA for the improvements to the, an expansion for the wastewater treatment plant. This is in regard to recent discussions with the PCQ and the permitting we have going on and the need that the city has to expand the plant as well as reroute the drain, the downfall to Big Cypress to the south instead of discharging to the existing tree. This is a design contract for preliminary and final construction. I did review it, and the percentages are well within acceptable amount.
Hey, council, will you have any questions on this item? Okay, if there's no questions, I'll open it up for a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Jerry Walker, seconded by Mr. Tim Dale. Madam Secretary, please record his vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. We'll now close item five, and now we'll move on to item six, which is to consider approval of West Loop Wastewater Collection Improvements Agreement with KSA.
Okay, mayor, fellow council members, this is another design contract with KSA. This is for a design of a West Loop wastewater collection line that'll expand our sewer, our sewer system on the west side of town along the state highway up to the northwest corner to promote development in that part of the city. It'll also tie into our existing systems. That'll help alleviate some of the system amounts that we have through the downtown area, which will also allow for expansion or any sort of growth that we have in the city. This is going to be a system, it's part of a sewer master plan type of improvement that'll help us grow for the future as well as tie into the previous contract design for, as we expand the sewer treatment plant.
Question there. It says in here that there'll be an elimination of three existing lift stations. Will we be able to repurpose that equipment for future growth or for spare parts, et cetera?
We will be able to evaluate it to see how, what the condition of those pumps are, and if there are some, yes, we'll definitely salvage as much as we can.
What length of time is this project, about a three-year?
Correct, both of these are, both the last one and this one are about a three-year term. It coincides with our permit schedule that we have with the state.
Wastewater Collection Improvement Agreement with KSA.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Jerry Walker, seconded by Mr. Henry Chappell. Madam Secretary, record the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll now close that item and move on to item seven on the agenda, which is a presentation and discussion of plan of finance and council consideration of resolution twenty twenty-one dash nine authorizing a notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation. We'd like, thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate your presentation.
Good evening, council. We briefly discussed certificate of obligation twenty twenty-one. As y'all know, we do have several ongoing projects around the city that we need to issue some debt to fund. Also, we want to fund this project that y'all just approved with Lenny to do the planning for the sewer plant and then the sewer line. This would also do for the dam that we're working on. Part of this would go for that. Part of it would be for any acquisition interest in land easements and any of the necessary projects associated with that. It'd also pay for any legal fees, engineering, architectural, or any professional services for these projects. We are looking at issuing approximately fifty-six point seven million dollars in all for all these projects, and we intend to pay for this from the utility system funds. In preparation for these projects, we would intend to issue a gradual rate increase that would go from fiscal years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five. We're working with our rate specialist right now to phase in those rates and figure out what kind of a phase in we would need to be able to fund this.
So you're talking about water and sewer?
Yes, sir. We would be looking at a water and sewer rate increase over the next four years. We're looking right now at anywhere between four, five percent gradual rate increase.
Y'all's at four or five percent each year or a total of that over those three years?
We're looking at four to five percent over three years. So it'd be four to five percent every year for three years, so.
Roughly fifteen percent at the end of it?
Yes, ma'am. We're looking at ways to maybe reduce that and maybe stretch it out over five years if possible. There may be some ways that we can, you know, try to get that down to around ten percent. We're trying to factor in growth, some other things, just really working around. But one of the things we don't want to do is strip the water and sewer dry so that we don't have the ability to do any other future expansion projects on top of that. So we really are working hard to minimize that water and sewer rate increase impact, but it looks like it's gonna be anywhere between ten and fifteen percent, and we'll have to, we're gonna try to phase it in over three to five years.
When you look at it as five percent a year, it'll end up somewhere around sixteen, seventeen percent total.
But like I said, we are working really hard to try to minimize that impact to the residents, and hopefully, some of the growth will reduce that. We're factoring in a growth of about one point two percent a year. That's what our average growth rate has been over the past ten years. And so if we continue on that growth rate and try to absorb that, and again, one of the other things we were looking at is potential impact fees. That's something else that can reduce that. But we're really working on putting those numbers together for y'all to get, to bring back to y'all and really figure out how we'll be able to fund this with minimal rate increases.
To cut right through it, I'd like to just say, as Mikel said, we're looking at ways to reduce the impact. It's about a fifty billion dollar price tag. So it's like going to Austin and taking different directions so you can take a shortcut. And either way, it doesn't feel like a shortcut. So we're gonna do what we can, but we gotta pay for that debt. So it's, it's gonna be about eighteen percent over the next three years, when we get to the next three years. And it's just, one thing I want to point out, it is an increase, but you remember, a year ago, we did the rate increase, and we found we had the second lowest rates in the whole state. And so we took it up a little bit. On water, we just took it up to pay for meters. We didn't pay, put a volume on there. And then on the sewer, we just, we went up a flat, two bucks or something like that a month rate. And so that's got us to where we are, and of course, we had a little increase this year, and we'll do another one next year. But, but then to add another five percent on what we're doing to get this big lump paid for. So I don't want to have you think that we're gonna find a way of doing it. We're not that, that's probably what it's gonna be in eighteen percent over three years.
But the big, these things that we're issuing the bonds for, things that are state mandated, we're rehabilitating and coming up to standard, and that's required by state. So this isn't something we have a choice to do. It's a matter of how do we do what they're requiring us to do, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, and there's just a couple of different parts there that we just got finished with before we got here. And I just want to make sure the citizens understood that, that these are issues that the state has mandated on us, and we're trying to figure out the best way to be able to get these done, and it is gonna cost the citizens more money, but we don't have a choice in this.
Well, I'd like to just mention what you just said, Councilman, that we're looking for the best ways, because, for example, we go to TCQ, and their engineers run the modeling, and they say, "You gotta do this." Well, in talking with Andrew, he said, "Look, there's some things we can run our own models, with some other engineers, then go back and we can set and negotiate with them and say, 'Look, we can do this, and accomplish the same for cheaper,'" but that's something that we don't normally do here. We just, "Okay, TCQ, we'll do whatever." And so we may, we may spend some time running our models, negotiating, see if they'll accept this, and then it may cut back on having to run a line a long way or a shorter way, or whatever you don't know. So yes, we're gonna stay on top of it.
That'll be real good to try to, try to work with them and see what can be done, not necessarily cutting corners, but see what alternatives are.
In the end, they'll have to approve what we do, but if we do some work and show them that it works, it's like engineers talking to engineers, you know, rather than just sit back there, whatever you want. Because we did what they told us to do this last time, and then they came back and said, "Yeah, we made a mistake, we redo the numbers, and yeah, we should have had to do this instead."
But to echo what Councilman Adams was talking...
But to echo what Councilman, uh, Adams was talking about, I want the citizens to know that what we're trying to do here is to minimize the impact to, financial impact to our citizens. And so that's, that's our long-term goal and plan here. And I just want them to understand that.
And not, not doing this project now will just mean it's going to be more later and worse. Yeah.
Seemed like we've already been through that before. This can has been kicked down the road. And now it's, uh, it's in the ditch and either we get it out or.
Mikel, on those bonds, i- if we go ahead and, and, and get the, the estimated, what is it, fifty-seven, fifty-six million and change? And let's say all these projects come in at fifty million. What happens to that other six million and change?
So what I wrote this right now was made it to where if, if and at fifty-six million, then we'll look at what other water and sewer improvements there are out there. And we'll repurpose that bond money to be used for other water and sewer improvements because right now there's a lot of improvements that haven't been done and our system is in badly need of repair. I mean, there are quite a few other improvements that need to be done. So this is the number one improvement that we have out there. But there are other projects that still need to be done and we'll re-impurse those for those other projects. Right now, this will get us through, you know, the next two or three years with some projects, but this is not the last project that the city needs to do.
So if we do find that we come in a little under our estimate, then we'll have, some of these funds can be designated for other, but it, but because of our new accounting system, they can track it and know that this money was still used in utility needs.
Yes, ma'am. And I will give you a report every month that has this money on it, how much it is. Um, I intend to invest some of it until we need it. Um, you'll have that investment strategy there, just like I've provided your bond funds, um, every month. You know, you can see exactly how much we have left in the park. You see how much we have left in that other bond money that we spent, you know, even have highlighted at the bottom how much we spent, how much is left, what projects we have allocated out. This will be on that same format and you'll be able to see exactly where we are, what projects we have designated for. And you'll be able to, if anyone ever asks, you can just show them that report, say, this is how much we have left. This is how much is designated, allocated, whatever it is, and we'll be able to keep up with it.
The transparency will be.
Uh.
And, and we'll make sure that it stays where it's supposed to.
Right now is the lowest rate, market rate that we've been in in a long time. We're estimating two point one three percent all-in interest cost on this. Um, our financial advisor, Jim Savonis, and I've been running some numbers on the market. And this, the market rates are the lowest they've been, the bond market rates, in a very long time. And, um, we're projecting that they're only going to go up from here, which is one of the reasons why we've sort of made the decision to try and get all the money now. Um, because with rates this low, um, we're, we're not going to see another time when we can get them this, this rate. I mean, if we waited a cup, if we only issued four or five million now and waited a couple of years, we may be seeing rates in four or five percent. So, I mean, that's just going to cost the citizens more money in the long run. So right now money is cheap and it's best to go in and get the money now while we can um, get the lower interest rates when the markets are low. And, um, it's going to cost the citizens the less amount of money. And we'll have the money for when we need it and we won't be worrying about, um, progressing further in the projects and not having the money that we need to complete these projects. So.
I mean, do it, put a plug in here for our water and sewer system. Let me just say, our system, and in, in saying what Mikel said, she, she's right. We're always going to have a project out there. We're not working on our system. It's falling apart. You know, we're just kidding ourselves. So, so, but let me just say, our water and sewer system is in pretty good shape, in great shape. Uh, Anthony, his guys do a good job. We, um, we have not had any that I've seen since, I mean, I looked, the first thing I do when I come, I look at several things, audits, financial system. I look at the wastewater and water to see if we have any EPA administrative orders or T C Q administrative orders. We haven't had any. Uh, we've made several, uh, over the years. They've, they've done projects and outs and, and looped lines that were dead end lines and on and on and on. So I, I don't want you to think that that's not the case. In some of this, this, uh, uh, um, project that we're having to do, we've been, we were notified by, by, and, and when we get notified, it's the office of the mayor and city manager that, that we needed to do something to bring our plant up enough or whatever. That was never brought forward to the council and never was looked at. And, and that's not Anthony's, uh, pay grade. So, yeah, uh, we did talk to Anthony, our Lanny, who was our, our engineer, and he said, we did some studies. He just, we gave him to him, did the study for the city to show what to do to fix it. And it was just let go and didn't, fell on deaf ears and didn't, didn't get to this level. So I, I don't want you to think it's, our system's bad. The system is pretty good, but we do need to take care of the treatment thing. Uh, I want, I was going to say the parks are great and the streets are great, but the water system isn't really bad, but that's not fair.
So right now have kind of a tentative schedule. Today, we were going to present this to you and, um, have y'all authorize us to move forward um, and improve, uh, notice of intent. The basically, the notice of intent allows us to um, put some ads in the paper, um, and notify all our residents that this is what we're going to do and move forward. Um, and then afterwards, we'll, we'll go ahead and start paying, um, Lenny to get started with his um, research and all of his stuff, the agreements that y'all paid. And then we're going to probably have to take those funds out of our fund balance because we just don't have the money to, you know, pay them right now. But the reimbursement resolution that follows this will allow y'all to re- reimburse our fund balance out of the bond proceeds when they come in. Um, we shouldn't be paying Lenny a whole lot at first because he's just doing a lot of design work, a lot of, um, planning and stuff. But once we get the bond proceeds, we won't get those until April. Um, but the work that we pay Lenny between now and April, we'll, we'll pay out of our fund balance that we have, our, our, uh, seventy-five day reserve that we, we have stored up. And then when the bond proceeds come in, we'll reimburse those. And then, um, that'll, they'll get our reserve money back up to where it needs to go.
I don't want to keep contradicting Mikel. I'm not trying to be that way, but when she says we're not going to pay Lanny a lot at first, we're going to pay him a whole bunch of money really fast in April. And, uh, I mean, on this project that we approved, it's, it was almost four million dollars to get through his thing. So over the next year, we'll, we'll pay him all of that. And, uh, and then plus the, um, plus the, uh, the one for the line.
I meant the first, before we get the bond proceeds.
I know, but I'll bet you we have a pretty big bill before April.
Um, and then, um, we'll, we will do the preliminary official statements. We'll have a rating call um, with, uh, standards, um, and poor and probably Moody's. Um, those are usually very in-depth. They look at our credit rating, check out how I'm doing financially. They usually look at our audit, um, kind of look at where we are and kind of give us a rating based on that. Um, and then after that, we send the, the, the bond out for competitive pricing. Uh, banks will go out and bid on our, uh, our certificate based on what our credit rating looks like. Just, um, then they competitively bid it. And then we will come back in April and, um, we will actually present those bids to y'all and y'all will have the opportunity to select the best interest rate at this point, usually what they're bidding. Um, they're bidding the terms, they're bidding, um, an all-in interest cost. And, um, we'll present those to y'all, whoever has the best rate. And then at that point, y'all can approve them. And then, um, after that, we'll, after y'all have approved it and sign the final, uh, documents, uh, authorizing them to purchase it, then we'll send all those out to the attorney general for a review. And then we'll have our money probably the first of, of May. So that's kind of the schedule, how those work. I mean, y'all, y'all have had bonds before issued, but this is kind of our first really big one that we've had. Um, once the money comes in, then I'll reimburse the, the water and sewer fund, fund balance for whatever amount we've spent out. Um, and then I'll start looking at how much cash I expect to spend within the next ninety to a hundred days. And I'll put that in guarantee bank. And then the rest of it, I'll probably put in one of the pools, what I expect to spend in the next year. The rest of it, I'll start looking at some long-term CDs to invest, um, so that we can try to get the maximum um, interest rate on it and start looking at some alternative investment sources. So, um, other than that, um, that's kind of what we, um, pro- project on this. I have Jim Savonis available by fun, by phone, if y'all want him to speak or say anything.
That's okay. Well, uh, I just, I want to say thank you first of all. You've been doing a remarkable job keeping us updated and abreast with what's going on on the, uh, ports of finances. And, uh, I just want to say thank you for that. Uh, council, do we have any further discussion? Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and, uh, open it for the council consideration of resolution twenty twenty-one dash nine authorizing a notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash nine authorizing a notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Henry Chappelle, seconded by Mr. Tim Dale. Madam Secretary, record the vote.
Uh.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And we'll now close that item and, uh, move on to item eight. Consider reimbursement resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten from bonds proceed.
This is the re- uh, reimbursement resolution. This was prepared by Jeff Golbus, who's our bond attorney. Um, he's reviewed everything. He's also available, stand by by phone. Again, this just allows us to reimburse the city from bond proceeds.
Counsel, we, we have no questions or any further discussion on this item. I'll open the floor.
I'll move the reimbursement resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten, uh, for bond, uh, reimbursement of bond proceeds.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Galen Adams, seconded by Mr. Henry Chappelle. Madam Secretary, record the vote, please.
Uh.
Uh.
Uh. Uh.
Uh.
Thank you, Mikel.
Thank you. We really appreciate you. Okay. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now go ahead and close that item. The next item on the agenda is the, uh, discussion of the twenty eighteen code adoption and local amendments.
Mayor and council, Darlene, are you getting, uh, on the phone? John Ankrum. John and who? No, uh, Larry, Larry McCray. Robert. Well, you can give Robert too, I guess, but Larry McCray. Uh, this is the two thousand, we're, we're under the two thousand twelve, um, um, national code, internet, international code. And every three years we get a new one. Uh, so we, there was one at fifteen, one at eighteen, there'll be one at twenty-one. We are, uh, wanting to look at approving, not tonight, but we're just going to go over some of the differences of implementing, have you approved, another meeting coming up and bring us up to date to the twenty eighteen, uh, code and the standards of building code and fire code. And so I, I think the fire code is, is twenty fifteen, the building code's at twenty-eight, uh, twenty twelve. So that's what we're getting ready to do. We've sent some letters out to all the builders to let them know it's coming. They, they pretty much know what's in it. So, and we kind of tell them the big things that are in it so they know and they're expecting it. But anyway, so John Ankrum is just going to go over some of the changes quickly for you. And then we'll be bringing it back to consider later.
Yes, sir.
So, um, but basically, uh, the twenty eighteen code adoption, um, we're currently under the two thousand nine for the fire and the two thousand twelve for the rest of the international codes and the twenty fourteen national electric code. Um, which is, the, one of the issues is, is having the fire in the building under two separate codes causes a bit of problems because the two thousand nine fire code and the two thousand twelve building code, the chapters nine and ten are identical. So there's different, there's different standards for codes in those, uh, those, those books. So it's a challenge to which one are we enforcing? Um, type situation. Uh, another reason is in six, we're going to meet with I S O, which is the insurance service, uh, office. Um, and basically we're going to go over our current codes, our processes, that kind of stuff. And we get a rating. And based on that rating, um, then that's what the insurance companies look at for property insurance and stuff like that for the, for the owners that live in our city. And basically if we're more than six years, six years or more behind the current code, um, it automatically drops us down to a six. So for example, the, the rating is a one to ten, one being the best, ten being the worst. Well, if you're six or more code cycle, years out of date with the code cycle, you automatically get a six. So that puts us way down towards the, the bottom rating. So before we meet with him in April, um, we're trying to get the, um, everybody on the same codes and get up to, uh, the twenty eighteen code. Uh, from the twenty eighteen code or from the two thousand twelve to the twenty eighteen, there really are no major significant changes. Uh, with the exception of a few items, but we addressed those in the local amendment. So for example, um, in the two thousand eighteen energy code, um, it becomes pretty restrictive. Um, so what we've done is we've added a local amendment that will allow the builders to continue to use the state adopted minimum energy code, which is currently the twenty fifteen energy code. Uh, most people have been submitting under that for new projects anyway, because when you go on to the software, it typically doesn't allow you to go any older than the twenty fifteen since that's the state adopting minimum. Um, so there's really no, no major change there. They'll still be able to utilize the same code they've been using. Um, the other one, the other two are the fire code. Uh, it retroactively has sprinkling spray booths uh, and restaurants with a, uh, assembly occupancy over three hundred that serve alcohol. And what we did is we amended those as well so that we've taken out the, uh, spray booth one altogether. We just deleted it. And the way it's worded for the, um, large assembly occupancies is they would have to comply with the code if they're, within twenty-four months, if they were notified by the fire department. So it, it'd have to be initiated by the fire department before it can come up. Um, other than that, some of the other things that we did put in there, um, were, uh, with additions to homes and carports. Um, we put under the definitions that they would have to meet the minimum parking requirements so that they would have to pour, uh, two-car parking space uh, out of concrete or asphalt, an all-weather surface. Um, and there's actually some other code items in there that are less restricted. For example, restaurants, you're supposed to have a male and female restroom. Uh, we've added a local amendment that until your argument load goes over twenty-five, you can use a unisex restroom. Um, and stuff like that. And then the rest of the items that are in the local amendment are pretty much just to clarify um, the intent of the code or to be specific where there's gray areas within the code. Um, so there's nothing really major in there that we're adding that we haven't already been doing. Um, or that, um, been already being enforced, um, through other ordinances that are, that are in our, um, code ordinances. So the key today was just to kind of bring it to your attention. I don't know if you've had a chance to look through them. Um, if you haven't looked through them yet, then possibly look through them, then we can meet again, uh, the next council meeting. And then if there's any concerns, uh, we can look at it. If not, then we'd like to put together an order and have you guys.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we have any questions? Any further discussions?
I do, I do, just for, just to be clear.
Phone two, if there's anything with the fire amendment, uh, he can answer those as well.
Yes, Miss, I believe Ms. Redfern had a question. I mean, I'm sorry.
Hey, just to be clear, if, if, if and when we, I know we need to do this, but will this affect any existing buildings that will have to make some, some upgrades? Or is this just for new construction or remodels, et cetera, going forward?
Jerry, uh, I did. Um, I think, I don't know, I think we might be delayed, but uh, basically, if, anything that was retroactive that would make that would affect any current uh, buildings that are currently already built or already in place, we remove those or we made amendments to those. So the new adoptions will only affect the new construction, new builds.
Yeah, I just didn't want any calls from citizens if it had some kind of notification without, without us knowing and being ready for those, any, any of those concerns. Thanks.
I have a question. When was the last time these changes were made?
Twenty twelve.
According to standard procedures, when should they have been made?
It, it should tech, tech, it, it, the worst-case scenario should be uh, adopted every other course. So if we were under the twenty, like, we're under the twenty twelve, so we're uh, we, we were supposed, we should, we could adopt the twenty twenty-one, but the problem with adoption of twenty twenty-one is the final edition of the twenty twenty-one code doesn't come out until the end of this year. Uh, and then the local amendments and stuff won't be in place until the beginning of twenty twenty-two. But we have the ISO rating uh, coming in April, so we kinda have to adopt them. But the fire codes behind, I mean, that should have been adopted by the twenty eighteen code or the twenty fifteen code at the, the latest, but um, putting them under the twenty eighteen, then what we'll probably, we'll have to do is in twenty twenty-five, we're gonna have to adopt the twenty twenty-four code.
When, what he's saying is when the twenty twenty-four codes come out, we, we, we let them work out the kink, if there's something needs to be changed. So we'll come about a year after that, so twenty twenty-five, we'll adopt the twenty twenty-four code.
So by amending these uh, these building codes as presented here tonight on most of these, this will affect our ISO rating? You think that will, it will come down?
ISO rating? Yeah, yeah, I mean, the thing is, is that if we, if we, if I meet with him in April and we're still under the two thousand nine fire code and the two thousand twelve building code, it's gonna automatically make our ISO rating a six. That's the best we're gonna be able to get. And I think we're currently a four, three or four. Um, so yeah, we have to, in order to get a better ISO rating, definitely to adopt new codes.
So once we adopt these two thousand eighteen codes, are we still going to consider adopting the twenty twenty-one code at some point?
Well, um, we'll, we'll go ahead and bypass that cycle to twenty twenty-one, and then we'll adopt the twenty twenty-four and twenty-five in twenty, January twenty twenty-five.
Uh, it's a, a follow-up to my previous question about uh, exempting our, our, our existing properties. What if those properties are sold, uh, if they change hands, would these new codes, would these changes have to be done in order to resell your existing property if it's there now?
You, you don't have to do.
No, the uh, the, 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 basically, your, your, your property can exist as is under the code that it was built under until either you do a significant remodel, which is basically structural, electrical, mechanical, or plumbing, or you change it. Or if the building has been occupied, uh, occupied for a hundred and eighty days or more. Well, those are the three things that it takes in, with the exception of accessibility. Uh, accessibility, the uh, bathrooms, accessible entrance, accessible route has to be updated uh, anytime you issue a new CBO um, to a building. But basically, unless you're changing used or uh, building's been vacant for more than a hundred and eighty days, then, then they would, and then a new person goes in, then, then they gotta comply with the, the code.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think that uh, clarity is important to our citizens, because you, we'll, we'll endure a few phone calls if that wasn't cleared up. Especially when it came to the carports and whatnot, so we appreciate that. Counsel, we have any further questions? Okay, we, counsel, it doesn't seem to have any further questions, so we thank you for that.
Uh, either the next council meeting or the first one at March, will uh, do you wanna have a, take a look at the local amendment, sir? Can we bring forward a, are you okay with bringing forward the adoption?
So the uh, the, in the reading here, the, the uh, remind us again, the couple of new code requirements that have a significant impact on the builders and developers. What was those one more time?
There's really gonna be none. I mean, what, we created local amendment so that the builders uh, really won't have any significant impact. Um, and we've also made out letters to all the contractors, one was going to go to a mechanical that are registered to the city and give them a notice um, stating we're gonna be adopting it, and uh, only one of them has actually called me to uh, ask some questions. It was a builder. But for the most part, they're, they're not gonna see a change, without us, with the exception of a selling them, we're adopting a new code, nothing's really changed.
One, one thing that has changed, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, but I think it changed in twenty fifteen, and that's when the, if you have a large school project, remodeling a school or building a school, they have to have a uh, safe uh, um, safe room for the students to get in. It's been interpreted as an underground, you know, concrete room, but it could, most, most of these schools have been using the GMs by reinforcing them, but they have to have some safe room, and that's in the twenty fifteen code.
Thank you.
Correct. Any, any new, actually, it's not just schools, but any new uh, school, uh, public buildings, police, police department, uh, fire departments, all that. They gotta have a uh, room that will withstand two hundred and fifty mile an hour.
Okay, thank you once again, and I think your que, your question was uh, if we're gonna bring this up at our next meeting, I think the council might be open to that. Okay, we'll table that, we'll, we'll have it uh, open on our next agenda item, our next uh, council meeting.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and uh, close item nine. And uh, move on to item ten on the agenda. Item ten is to consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Application for funding through the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Community Development Block Grant.
Good evening, mayor, fellow council members. Uh, by the way, I'd never introduced myself before. I'm Andrew Zager, the city engineer, public works director. Well, I thought I just knew it today. Anyway, I would like, uh, what we have before you for both this item and the next are two resolutions to uh, accept and award um, the grant writing administrator roles to uh, Trailer and Associates. Uh, we went for a formal request for proposals and we did receive one. Uh, we did go through the review process of this proposal to make sure that they met all the requirements for uh, the Texas CDBG grants and uh, qualifications that are required for that. Um, this grant company, this grant writing company has worked for the city in the past, as well as many other municipalities, and they do meet all the requirements um, for this type of grant application and grant writing. Uh, this first uh, resolution is for the general CDBG grants. There's uh, one we have coming up in April that we can have them apply for, but also in review of their proposals, there are several others. One of them may be uh, towards the wastewater treatment plant, where they have, have a history of uh, getting awards for a large amount of grants for that. So we'll be in discussions for what else we could apply for. Uh, anything to get some grants, because I feel it's helpful for the city, especially on a project that large. Uh, as required, we do have to do this as a resolution for the acceptance of uh, them as a consultant. And with the review of their proposals, we feel that they are a very worthwhile consultant to have on board with the city, and we do recommend approval of it.
Okay, thank you. Do we know the dollar amounts of them, of these?
The dollar amounts are gonna be based on any grants that they receive. Um, it's a scale that, I don't have the proposal in front of me, but it is based on the amount of grants, and it is a reflective scale um, based on whatever we get awarded. Um, it, I think at most was uh, eight, ten percent. Um, but if it's a very large grant, it's a very low percentage wise.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any further questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve this with twenty twenty-one dash eleven, the application for funding through the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Community Development Block Grant is presented. I'll second that.
Have a motion by Mr. Tim Dale, seconded by Mr. Henry Chappelle. Madam Secretary, please record a vote. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now close that item and move on to our very next item. Uh, Mr. Andrew, also, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve, application for funding through the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Community Development Block Grant, Main Street Program.
Uh, like I just mentioned, come here, council members, this is also to award the Trailer and Associates the grant writer administrator uh, role for this particular grant. This is the specific one that is tied to the Main Street Program. We did apply for it last year. We were unsuccessful, however, we did hear our names in the hat, so now they're more familiar with the city and what we're looking for. And we are recommending to apply for that grant again this year, and using uh, the same uh, company, Trailer and Associates, to prepare that grant application and get it back into the, into the state.
Thank you, sir. Uh, counsel, we have any question? Floor is open for motion.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve, application for funding through the Texas Department of Agriculture, uh, the Texas Community Development Block Grant, twenty twenty-one Main Street Program.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Henry Chappelle, seconded by Mr. Galen Adams. Madam Secretary, record a vote, please. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now close that item, move on to item twelve on the agenda, which is to consider declaring vehicles three fifty-eight surplus and disposing of vehicles to de cab fire department for forty-five hundred dollars.
Thank you, counsel. This is one of the vehicles that was replaced by our enterprise lease um, company. It was um, an older, one of the older Tahos. Um, de cab, fire department would like to purchase it. They saw it out there. We were getting ready to take it to auction. We're trying to get quite a few of uh, vehicles replaced and line them up, and we're gonna take them all to bid at one time. They were, saw it and said, well, we'll give you forty-five hundred right now for it. Since they are a local fire department and a local government entity, um, we're asking that you declare it surplus and um, give it to them for forty-five hundred dollars, probably more than what we'd give for it at auction.
That was gonna be my question. You think that's the fair price? You're satisfied with it?
Yes, sir.
Was that a high mileage vehicle?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Uh, counsel, if we don't have any further questions on this, we can go ahead and uh, open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we uh, consider declaring this vehicle three fifty-eight surplus and disposing of it to the de cab fire department for the forty-five hundred dollar price that has been presented tonight.
I second the mo-
Motion by Mr. Tim Dale, seconded by Mr. Jerry Walker. Madam Secretary, record a vote. Motion carries unanimously. And now we'll go ahead and move on to item thirteen on the agenda, presentation of hotel occupancy tax audit.
I know you're probably getting tired of looking at me tonight, but this is actually a good agenda item. Um, right, not too far after I got here, um, we hired Avenue to do a, a hotel occupant tax review, and we uh, selected four. We have fifteen hotels in town, and we didn't want to do all of them at once. We just picked the four, and then now we'll, we'll complete another four after this. Um, we, we, they found about thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars in revenue. That will go back to us. We had a special commendation on Motel Six. They didn't find anything. They've been reporting all of their revenues correctly. Um, so that was very good for them. We did come up with quite a few more on some of the other ones. Um, La Quinta was the, the biggest one. Um, the reason the audit took so long was because we gave them um, an extra uh, four months to produce the documentation um, that they said they had. Um, and we just gave them, we kept giving them time. They kept asking for more time and more time. Um, and so finally, toward the end, we just said, okay, we've given you four months. We've gotta close the audit, and so um, they were unable to produce their exemption documents. So um, anyways, this is what they found, um, and we, we have about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of revenue that we collected and um, added to our hotel motel tax. So we will begin doing the next four um, hotels, and um, we, you know, this is one of those things now, we'll be able to continue to, going forward, continue to collect this revenue. Yes.
Sorry.
It's something that should have been collected over the years. Which is, which is a certain amount of income that has just been missing with the city over the time, period. Because if you, if this is the first audit you've ever done, no one knows all the other years of how much has been done. Is that correct? Okay.
It appears to me they've been on the honor system. And we have collected these funds. These are in the bank, or these are, or, or has the, the demand just been made to them to pay this?
Hampton paid, Holiday Inn paid, La Quinta, we've made the demand.
So how long do they have to pay?
We've given them thirty days.
What's the consequence if they don't pay?
We uh, do penalty and interest on top of that, and then they, yeah.
So these entities have, for clarification for the public, these entities have been collecting this and just have been inappropriately uh, uh, funding this over the years.
They're supposed to collect it and put it in a separate bank account, like a tax, just like we do. Anytime we collect any kind of tax, sales tax or anything, we, we have to, we have to remit, like, if we collect tax on a water bill, we have to collect our portion, we collect the state portion, we have to put it in a separate account, and then we remit it to the state. If they, whenever they charge a hotel room fees, they collect a tax. They're supposed to keep it in a separate account and then remit it to us. And so if they, if they do, what typically a lot of these hotels do is they just collect the tax and put it all in together, and they don't separate the tax. What this program is doing is going in, working with these individual hotel owners, showing them how they're supposed to keep their tax separate, how they're supposed to properly do it. So these audits were more than just going in and auditing them. It was actually training the owners on how to, to keep their books, how to keep their taxes separate, and, you know, correctly reporting them. And some of the hotels already knew how to do it, you know, for instance, Motel Six, because they were already keeping their stuff straight. But, you know, some of the others weren't doing it as much, or um, were, so, but this is, this is going to be really good for some of the hotels going forward, because it's gonna train them on how to keep their books going forward.
That's good. How many years did we go back on them? This amount- That's good. How many years did we go back on them? Th- these amounts here, the twenty-seven, thirty-nine, the twenty-eight thousand, what, how many years could we go back to collect?
So, we went back to July first, twenty sixteen, because that was the most the law would allow us to go back.
I have a question. So, as far as the city is concerned, what will you do to make, ensure that this doesn't, that this is kept up? But, once we go through the entire cycle, what will we go through in order to maintain this level of check and balance for the city?
So, now we have, um, amended our reports. Before, we were just doing, like, gross sales, and then they would just kind of, the reports were not as detailed. So, now we're, we went back with the help of Avenue, restructured our reports. So, our reports now have the number of rooms that they rent, what exemptions they're claiming, and then we, we've gone with their help and restructured the way they're reporting our hotel motel tax, so that we can track those going forward. So, that, that gives us a chance that when they're actually submitting those reports, we can kind of do a double check and an audit, as opposed to them just saying gross sales times seven percent and a check. So, now we have the ability to actually break down those individual exemptions. We can see what those exemptions are that they're claiming, and then at that point, we can check it when they're bringing in their hotel motel tax, so that we're not, um, we, we have more of a way to check it on our end, as, as, as opposed to how it was being done before.
Good deal. Thank you.
And then in a year or two, we do the same audit again. Didn't we do the sales tax last year?
So, we, we were gonna do the sales tax. We just haven't had a chance to, to get through that before. So, the, we had hired Avenue to do a sales tax audit as well, um, but she said they hadn't done that yet. Their sales tax crew got COVID, and then a bunch of them have, have, so they have not done that one yet. So, because I had reached out to her and asked her, you know, how that sales tax is going on. She said that they've just, the whole bunch of them, um, have gone out, and they've had some people quit on that. So, haven't done the COVID audit, I mean, haven't done the sales tax. COVID has really hit their company hard.
So, uh, the thing I wanted to point out is that, if you remember, the federal government came out and said motels didn't have to, or the state did, they didn't have to pay their sales tax to the city. They gave it off sixty days, and then another sixty days during COVID. And, and I never could hardly get my hands around that, because if they were putting it in a fund, it would be there. But, this is what happens. It's a, it's a, it's a money management thing. A lot of people, a lot of small businesses don't. They, they pay their bill when they got it, and they keep the money all together, and, no, it's a training thing, but a lot of businesses do it this way, especially mom and pops, and, and it, it's a significant thing.
But, uh, this is gonna be done annually or by annuals for the audits?
So, typically, because we have fifteen hotels, what you would do is you would do four hotels a year, and then you would just repeat it. So, then that every year, you know, basically each hotel would be audited every four years. Um, if you have some like this that are, you know, really bad, then maybe you would wanna put them and do them every two years. So, like, some of these we may wanna pick up and do again in two years, just to make sure that they're, you know, staying on. But typically, we wanna try to get through all of our hotels in four years. So, we wanna pick them up, and, you know, we'll select four to do in four years, and then basically you get them on a routine to where you're doing them every four years. And then, you know, you wanna maybe do, pick up another one and, you know, do it every two years. They, they're constantly being reviewed and checked.
Yeah, the, the reason I was asking this, because, like we said, if, we did four this round, we'll be doing four, and, uh, statute of limitations, right now, we go back to two thousand sixteen. When the next four go, that two thousand sixteen mark's gonna move up on it, right? Okay.
That, that's why you wanna try to get them all done every four years, so that way you're constantly overlapping the four years, so that you can always go back in the four years, try to get them all within the four-year timeframe. We paid them a flat two thousand five hundred dollars per hotel. So, um, this was just a flat fee that we paid them to do it. Um, I didn't calculate that, but, um, ten thousand, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. So, yeah, yeah, we roughly made twenty-five thousand off of this.
Plus, we have that going forward now. The, uh, they know how to, how to figure it and send it in correctly, so we'll be getting more each, each month, quarter. How do they pay that quarterly, or?
Um, they pay that monthly.
So, monthly, now we will be getting, uh, more income going forward.
So, question, uh, going forward, once this is complete, uh, if they fail to pay, is there penalties, like a late fee, or, you know, some type of fee, extra fee?
It's due on the twentieth of the month, and if they don't pay it by the twentieth of the month, then there's a ten percent fee tacked on to that.
So, will La Quinta continue to incur late fees until they pay?
Yes.
That ought to be easy for them to remember, because that's when sales taxes do.
Yes, sir.
Or business.
I, I've already had a couple of them call me and make sure we're gonna be open on Friday, so they can get in here and pay their hotel motel tax. So, I'd, yeah, I did, I did tell them that if we weren't gonna be here on Friday, that they would have until Monday to get in here and, and get back.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you. Uh, counsel, we have no further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Reese. We'll go ahead and close that item. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of cap risk audit for a GASB statement, number seventy-five.
Um, this is-
The hotel motel tax was a very complicated issue, though. That's why it took so long. This isn't complicated, so we'll be done in about five minutes, right?
I'll make this real simple. This is the GASB audit that nobody understands, and I've actually taken, like, a bunch of classes on it, and I really still don't understand it. Basically, we have to pay somebody to, um, calculate if every employee in the city retired right now, how much would we have to put on our books. Then we have to take this report and give it to our auditors, and then they put it in the audit. So, they calculated it. Here's a copy of the calculation. Y'all are welcome to read it. If y'all understand it, then we will sit down and have a good conversation, and y'all can explain it to me. So, if y'all have any questions, please let me know.
And then the auditor will, will kind of tell us. They look at what our general fund and our utility fund balance and stuff, and they'll, they'll say, based on this report, you, you need to have this much money available. It may not be a hundred percent, because they know everybody's not gonna go at the same time, but they may say, we need to up it a little bit, our fund balance or whatever, and, and get into our business a little bit. It's kind of like the hotels and us, you know, we're saying, we'll have the money when we get ready for it, and they're saying, you need, you need to have it here now.
They did say we did, could lower it a little bit. They said we could go from five percent to four and a half percent. So, that was good. I, so I did read that. So, that was kind of a good thing. So-
Just out of curiosity, what did they charge for this report?
A lot. I think it was like twenty-five hundred dollars. It wasn't too much.
Do we have to have this done every year?
Um, we have to have it done every two years. They usually update it every year for the auditors, but they do a very in-depth report and look at and update all of our medical and everything with it every two years, but then they update it annually.
Will they charge twenty-five hundred more for the update?
This one is like, uh, on a co-op thing that they do with all the cities around here. So, they, since they do all the cities and they have, they, they, they kind of give us cities discounts for doing it, for actuarial services. So, it's, it's not bad.
Okay, thank you, man. We appreciate you, Mikel. Yeah, we'll go ahead and, uh, close item fourteen on the agenda. Items fifteen and sixteen on the agenda, uh, we, go ahead and-
Uh, Mayor and Council, on fifteen sixteen, uh, there was some posting errors for, for the, uh, agenda time different. Uh, Robert posted the right time, and then somehow the agenda was posted up a little wrong. And so, they did hold the meeting last week, and P and T, and, but in talking with Kerry, he said, we need to, actually, since we had two different times, we need to go back to P and T, to go back there in March, and, and this will come back to be on the second meeting in March. So, these, they, we just need to, you, you don't need to table them, because we're not bringing these items back. There'll be brand-new items. It'll be the same items, but we just need to not do them, not address them, and move, move around them and move on.
Okay. Okay, well, with that being said, we'll go ahead and go past fifteen to sixteen, and we'll go to seventeen on our agenda, which is public comments. Madam Secretary, we have anyone online? Anyone in the audience? Okay, that was easy. We'll go ahead and close item seventeen on the agenda, on the agenda, and we'll go right into item eighteen, which is the city manager's report.
Um, uh, I just wanted to say that I wanna thank my staff, uh, the police, the fire, uh, water and sewer, parks, uh, public works. These guys, uh, not just today, they, they've been working through the weekend, and a lot of, all nights, and, and they have double shifts at the fire department, so they don't go home. They stay, and some of our police and some of our employees are doing that. And they, I've heard some stories about what they've had to do to make sure they're able to be here to do what they, their work with their families and so forth, and it, it's quite a juggling act they do. And, uh, but they, they've done well. You, maybe when you pulled in, you noticed this parking lot was, uh, dry, almost dry. So, those crews got out this morning, and they got a truck over here, but they shoveled the walks and made it, got out early, made sure it was okay for us to come to work and, uh, other buildings. We've had a number of water issues through the weekend and so forth, and, uh, and, uh, you can imagine, in this weather, our guys are out there, you know, fixing, doing what they have to do in this weather, and, uh, and I'll say, I, I think the water and sewer and streets and parks, they're our unsung hero sometimes. We, we, they do this day in, day out, and we just get up and have water and, and so forth, and don't concern. But, I, I just wanna say, I appreciate what they do. I, I looked at what they did, uh, this, today, and known what they've done over the weekend, and just wanna say thank you, tell you guys that I really do appreciate it. I appreciate you all, too, because I know you're sacrificing to, to be on the job, uh, twenty-four, seven. So, that's all I have today. Uh, other than, it looks like we're gonna be doing the same thing we did today right on through this week.
Yeah. I, I, I just wanna go back on what they were saying, and, hey, I, I really appreciate it, what you guys do, is not going unnoticed. Uh, it's a lot of hard work, especially in this type of climate. So, again, hats off to you, all of you, the staff and, uh, city workers.
We appreciate you all. Make sure they, they know them.
Okay, with that being said, we'll go ahead and close item eighteen on the agenda, and, uh, at this time, I'll open the floor for a motion to close, to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion made by, made by Mr. Jerry Walker, seconded by Henry Chappelle. At this time, we are adjourned.